Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order if everyone will stand up for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Okay, reading an approval of the minutes from the last meeting held on February 17th, 2021. I'm assuming everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Opportunity for the public to address the board, agenda items only.
No, we did not receive any emails today.
Okay. Proclamation presentation, I believe that is me. Okay.
I'm going to let the president of the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute come in while you read the proclamation. Is that okay?
Does he want to read the? Do you want him to read the proclamation?
No, but she wants to be present.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi Karen.
Morning, how are you?
Hi. Are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas colon and rectal cancers are one of the most frequently diagnosed cancers in northeastern Pennsylvania, with incidence and mortality rates in some areas as much as 11% higher than the US average. Whereas about 75% of new cases of colon and rectal cancer occur in patients of average risk and approximately 515 new cases are diagnosed. Nearly 200 patients die from colon cancer each year in the counties of Lackawanna, Luzerne, Monroe, Pike, Susquehanna, Wayne, and Wyoming combined. Whereas the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute has been easing the burden of cancer in northeastern Pennsylvania for over 28 years through community and patient services, hospital and practice support services, and cancer surveillance programs specifically designed to meet the unique needs of our region. Whereas on Thursday, March 25th, 2021, the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute will sponsor the 18th Annual Casual, CASUAL, for Colon Cancer Awareness Saves Unlimited Adult Lives Day. Whereas Casual, CASUAL, Day was established by the family of Helen Phillips, who fought a courageous battle against colon cancer and died in the summer of 2020, 2002. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notariani, Chris Shermack, and I, commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize March as Colorectal Cancer Month and urge residents to be screened for early detection of colon cancer and to participate with the support and with, I'm sorry, and participate with the support of the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute and its colon cancer awareness efforts and proclaim March 25th, 2021 as Casual Day in Lackawanna County. In witness thereof, we have hereon to set our hand and our, and cause the seal of the commissioners of Lackawanna County to be affixed this third day of March, 2021.
Thank you. Karen, would you like to say anything?
Just thank you. Commissioner Notariani has participated in this for many, many years, and I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the Commissioner Shermack and Commissioner Dominic also for setting your, your hand to this proclamation. It is an annual event and it is as important as ever. Due to the pandemic, many people have not done preventative care or health maintenance, including screenings. And so this message, spreading the word at this meeting and through this proclamation is as important as ever. So like you said, it's our 18th year of doing this event. It is our largest awareness event. And please know that our organization is here as a resource for you and your constituents throughout the year, but especially during the month of March. Thank you.
My family has been personally affected by colon cancer. So if there's anything that I can do to help raise awareness, just reach out to my office and I'll do it for you.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
When, when I became 50, quite a few years ago, I was reminded by a friend who was a year older that it was time for me to do it. And I ended up, I had a large pile. And if he did not remind me to do it, I probably wouldn't have. And, and you know, in reality, it probably saved my life. And I just, a week ago, I went through another colonoscopy. It's, it's, they're not like, not the best day of your life, but it's okay. It's not that bad. And people need to do it, and they really do. It's important and it'll save your life.
It may not be pleasant, but they are definitely important.
And important, yes.
Necessary.
And it's, it's encourage everyone to do it after they're 50 years old.
Thank you. Thank you for your part in spreading this word.
I hope too.
I'm sure Commissioner Shermack would like to get involved in any way too.
Oh, absolutely. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thanks Karen.
Great. Thank you. I'll sign off.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay, next on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 21-0057, ordinance number 270, second reading establishing the tax claim bureau's fees. Brian?
Actually, I'm going to take that commission.
Okay.
Okay. This is an ordinance of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, ratifying and authorizing charges, expenses, and fees associated with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes by the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau. The Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna do hereby ordain as follows. The Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau is a division of the Office of the County Commissioners pursuant to the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law and is responsible for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes owed to certain taxing districts situated in Lackawanna County. Two, pursuant to the Municipal Tax Lean Act, the Pennsylvania General Assembly has permitted the tax claim bureaus of the several counties to adopt and use the procedures set forth in the Tax Lean Act in addition to the procedures set forth in the Tax Sale Law. Effective October 1st, 2016, Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorized the Tax Claim Bureau to utilize the procedures contained in the Tax Lean Act through the, to Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 244. Section four, the Tax Claim Bureau and the City of Scranton pursuant to an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and memorandum of understanding whereby the City of Scranton has appointed the Tax Claim Bureau to collect delinquent real estate taxes, and the Tax Claim Bureau has agreed to collect for the City of Scranton's delinquent real estate taxes and to file tax claim liens for delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of the City of Scranton pursuant to the Tax Lean Act. Section five, both the Tax Sale Law and the Tax Lean Act authorize the addition of charges, expenses, and fees in connection with the collection of delinquent real estate taxes, and Lackawanna County hereby ratifies and/or authorizes the schedule of charges, expenses, and fees as described herein. Charges and fees, section two, charges, expenses, and fees to be added when applicable during the course of collection of unpaid real estate taxes, Lackawanna County hereby ratifies and/or approves the following fee schedule for the collection of unpaid real estate taxes pursuant to the Tax Lean Act. Interest rate pursuant to section 7143 of the Tax Lean Act, 9% per annum. Statutory notice fee shifting pursuant to section 7106 of the Act, 16 cents. Second notice for fee shifting, $1.50. Perfection and service of the tax lien claim is $8. Clerk of Judicial Records filing fee for the tax lien is $53. And Clerk of Judicial Records filing fee for the satisfaction of the claim is $10. And this ordinance will take effect 10 days upon enactment. So this, this is the second reading. So we need a vote today to approve this and adopt it as legislation.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
On the question? All in favor? Hi. Resolutions number 21-0064, approving current payables. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the filing payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 317466-317868, inclusive totaling $1,520,448.90. And the electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $2,698,643.64. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 3rd, 2021. Madam Commissioner?
I am sure everyone has had an opportunity to review the documents provided. So if anyone has a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0059, ratifying an agreement with the Scranton Chamber of Commerce.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby ratify the professional service agreement between Skills in Scranton, the Workforce Development Affiliate of the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, and the Area Aging Agency on Aging for the Administration of Workforce Reimbursement Funds to Lackawanna County Businesses Approved to Administer COVID Vaccinations to Lackawanna County Residents. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 3rd, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Aging, Jason Kavulich.
Hi Jason, how are you?
I'm doing well. Good morning, everyone. This, this project we have with the Chamber of Commerce boils down to data and data, data entry. We, we engage with the chamber to help us with our lift, with our local pharmacies and our local medical providers to input data in real time and some of the back data that we have that needs to be entered into the Department of Health website so that we can get an accurate count of individuals who've had the vaccine in Lackawanna County and how much vaccine we need in Lackawanna County. So this work is critically important. It negatively impacts our vaccine distribution efforts and our vaccine supply in the county. If we don't have this data in the computer, the students that were engaged in the Chamber of Commerce and hiring will be placed in each of the individual pharmacies or in the healthcare provider's business. They will then input this data and also help with some calls to schedule appointments as the vaccine becomes more and more available. So it's a really important program. It was put together very hastily, but, and I have to give Amy Leister at the Chamber of Commerce a lot of credit for getting it quickly as she did. We, we have over 110 applicants. And we're also looking probably to expand this program to help us with our rented mortgage relief programs in the county as well because we've had such a positive response from the community.
Do you want to explain to people what negative impact it had on the supply of vaccines without the pharmacies, pharmacies being able to get it inputted? Even though they got the shots in the arms, if they didn't say, didn't put it into the computer system, we didn't get vaccines.
Right. The Department of Health relies heavily on this data to decide if, if a community is going to get a shipment of vaccines or if they need second doses. So when there's a delay in, in this information being available to the Department of Health and they can't see it, then they, they have no way to say, we need to prioritize vaccines to this, this is part of the Commonwealth. So it delays our, our supplies. It negatively impacts how many people we can get first and second doses every, every, every week.
And our, our local businesses are ringing the phone off the hook for these people, correct?
Yes. So, you know, we're still pushing individuals to please use 211 and, and stay away from calling the local businesses. So the local businesses, as they get their vaccine, can use their phone lines to schedule appointments. So that message we keep sending out to the community. To date, we've, we, you know, our last report, we've, we've put over, we've helped over 3,000 residents of Lackawanna County get on the list that they need to be on so that they can get the vaccines. So I think we're doing pretty good. There's still a wait time, of course. But as the supply increases, I think our system will smooth out and we'll, we'll start rolling through the 1A population, you know, even 10 times faster than we already are.
And the logistics of this is very, it's more complicated than you would think if you weren't involved in it. So you're doing a good job, Jason, and you, Brian. Does anybody have any questions for Jason? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0059?
Make a motion?
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, Jason. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
This is Resolution 21-0030, awarding the Performing Arts Audit.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the audit of the Performing Arts Center Authority to Robert Rossi and Company, 299 Main Street, Elephant, for the years ended December 31st, 2020, 2021, and 2022, for a fee of $7,500 per year. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 3rd, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our CFO, Mr. Thomas Durkin.
Hi Tom.
Good morning, Commissioner. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you. This is just the follow through on what we've been talking about for the last couple of months. This is the final auditor that we're putting in place to complete all the component unit audits, to push them up through to Zankowski and Axelrod, the county auditor, to prepare the county audit.
Okay. And we did discuss at previous meetings, the fact that we're just, while it's not required under the Home Rule Charter for the individual units, we're trying to switch up the auditors every couple of years so as to avoid residency. Is that right?
We did discuss that, yes, Commissioner. That's, that's correct, Commissioner Dominic.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0060? Do I have a second? Is there a second?
Who, who was first? Me or Jerry?
Jerry was first.
Jerry. I'll second.
Okay. On the question, all in favor? Resolution number, thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
See you, Tom.
Resolution number 21-0061, ratifying the submission of a RACP grant application on behalf of the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank. Brian?
Whereas the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank Headquarters Project entails construction, a mo, construction of a modern office building on acquired land and/or renovating a vintage building with updates owned by the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank to locate their headquarters and showcase their growing digital capabilities in Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania. And whereas the county of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance capital program funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank has proposed that the county assist the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistant Capital Program project for the project. And whereas the county desires to assist the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistant Capital Program for the project. Whereas Lackawanna County does hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds. And now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file and accept an application award in the amount of $2 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank for the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank Headquarters Project. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 3rd, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Hi Brenda.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
This resolution is ratifying the filing acceptance of the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank in the amount of $2 million for their bank headquarters project. The project entails planning for potentially constructing a modern office building on acquired land or renovating a vintage building to be owned by the bank in order to locate their headquarters and showcase their growing digital capabilities. In addition, the proposed project would create a more attractive environment for highly desired talent to support business objectives and increase capacity to accommodate planned growth in technology and improve efficiency in their service and operations. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0061?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor? Brenda, I think you're sticking around, right?
I'm here till the end.
Okay, Resolution 21-0062, authorizing the filing of a DCNR grant application for a Lackawanna County Comprehensive ATV Feasibility Study. Brian?
Whereas Lackawanna County Commissioners desire to undertake the project entitled Lackawanna County Comprehensive ATV Study, and whereas the applicant desires to receive from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources a grant for the purpose of carrying out this project. And whereas the package includes a document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant, and the applicant understands that the contents of the document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant includes appendices, appendages referred to therein will become the terms and conditions of the grant agreement between the applicant and the department. And if the applicant is awarded a grant, and now therefore be it resolved that one, the grant agreement signature page may have, may be signed on behalf of the applicant by the official who, at the time of the signing, has title of chairperson. The two, if this official signed the grant agreement signature page prior to the passage of this resolution, the grant of the authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. Number three, if the applicant is awarded a grant, the grant agreement signature page signed by the above official will become the applicant, grantee's executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Number four, any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who, at the time of the signing of the amendment, has the title chairperson specified in paragraph one, and the grantee will be bound by the amendment. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 3rd, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is authorizing the filing of the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Grant Application for Lackawanna County Comprehensive ATV Feasibility Study. The grant application is seeking funds to undertake a countywide comprehensive ATV study to best determine next steps in potentially providing space or outlets appropriate for ATV riders in Lackawanna County. Any questions?
Hey, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0062? Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0063, entering into a grant agreement with Metro Action. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna does hereby enter into a grant agreement with Metro Action Incorporated, a local nonprofit community development financial institution affiliate of the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, 222 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton. And be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners is hereby approve the Lackawanna County COVID-19 Hospitality Industry Recovery Grant Program to be administered by Metro Action Incorporated with a contribution of $2,374,844 as a grant to provide, to further provide assistance to the Lackawanna County Hospitality Industry Businesses adversely affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of, of the county of Lackawanna does hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this grant program. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 3rd, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Sacco.
In February, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania earmarked $145 million to establish the COVID-19 Hospitality Industry Grant Program to aid hospitality industry businesses adversely affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Lackawanna County applied for and has been awarded $2,374,844 to create the Lackawanna County COVID-19 Hospitality Industry Recovery Grant Program. This resolution states that the county is entering into an agreement with Metro Action to administer the grant program on our behalf. The grant program will provide grants up to $25,000 to eligible businesses in Lackawanna County. We felt that providing grants up to $25,000 instead of $50,000, which the grant program would allow to, would allow us to provide assistance to more small businesses that in need. The majority of the businesses that have been negatively affected are our small mom and pop businesses. And a lot of these businesses have not had enough or any assistance in the past. These businesses will be given priority, and we hope to be able to help approximately 50 to 60 more small businesses by lowering the maximum grant amount from 50 to 25,000. Information on the grant program will be available at www.metroaction.org. Businesses are encouraged to read the program guidelines and gather required documents so that they are prepared to submit a grant application on March 8th, when the program goes live. The application will remain open for two weeks or until funding is, is exhausted. And again, I always want to thank you for your continued support and investment in our small businesses in Lackawanna County that have been severely impacted by this terrible pandemic. Any questions?
I think Brenda maybe explain to people why it, we have, we're conduit, it's going through Metro Action, why that was necessary.
It was part of the grant agreement. We, we were not allowed to administer the program on our behalf. And Metro Action has always been a good partner, and they understand our small businesses and have provided technical assistance for us in the past. Specifically, when we had the $4.5 million grant, that was the PA statewide assistance that was from our CARES Act that occurred in late 2020.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Brenda, just want to tell the, the folks out there that while the, the governor and the state is telling us we can have grants up to $50,000, we have made the decision to make them up to $25,000 so that more people can, more businesses can get the grants, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're approximating about 50 to 60 more businesses would be eligible and, and the funding would be able to be provided to them by lowering that amount to 25,000.
Is there a rough estimate of how many we think we'll be able to get?
Based on past experience, because it's by the amount of revenue that the small business generates, we're hoping to get anywhere between 175, 185, 190. And that's at an average of $12,000 per grant. So we're, we're hopeful that we'd be able to help quite a bit of small businesses that are in need.
Right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks Brenda.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0063?
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks Brenda. See you later.
Bye.
Resolution number 21-0065, ratifying a contract extension with the Scranton Cultural Center. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby ratify a contract extension with the Scranton Cultural Center on behalf of the Lackawanna County Courts for the COVID-19 Court Relocation Rental to begin March 1st, 2021 and end May 28th, 2021. Rental of spaces are the Weinberg Theater and Lobby, the Grand Ballroom and Lobby, and the Weinberg Stage to include increased maintenance, disinfecting sound systems, internet access with a cost of $13,850 per month. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 3rd, 2021. Madam Commissioner, I can explain this. This is in the fall, well, it was late summer. We negotiated with the Cultural Center to hold jury selection at, at the Color, Culture Center, right in the middle. We were coming out of the, the summer months for the pandemic, and the courts wanted to get up and running. They had not been running since March. They started in September, they ended in December. Once again, they want to start getting up and running again as they have been shut down since January and February. They're looking to start, actually, it's going to start next week on March 8th, I believe the date is. Lester Rosario went over the contract. It's just an extension of the last contract. We've actually been reduced the amount that we're paying out due to, you know, you find out as you actually need what you don't need. We started much more, much more space. We don't need that now. So we've, we've cut down on some things and, and we renegotiated the price. This is going to be very effective for the courts to operate. Jury trials, both criminally and civilly, need to continue. And given the, the fact that we are still in this pandemic, and we are not all vaccinated at this point, nor shall we be for a while, simply putting them in the jury room over the courthouse is ineffective in keeping down the spread of COVID-19. Frank, do you have anything to add to the, to the contract?
I, I do not, Chief Jeffries.
I think you've stated it very well, and it's simply just an extension of the already existing contract that we entered into last fall.
That's it, Madam Commissioner?
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0065?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Tracy?
No, we have no emails today.
Okay. Commissioners, other business. Jerry?
I'm good.
Chris?
Um, something I saw on the news this morning, and I just want to bring everyone's attention, Geisinger in Zer County. I guess some phone calls have been going out. There's a scam that's, looks like it's out there for people. They're trying to set up appointments for vaccines. So these calls are come, going out to folks. You know, they're looking for personal information. They're asking for money. That's, they, they shouldn't be asking for money. The vaccines are at no cost. They're also saying that they're going to hold their social security checks. They're not, that's not true. So if anybody in our county starts to receive anything like that, reach out to Geisinger. There's, there's an 800 number for them. It's 800-275-6401. You know, I don't know. I haven't heard anything in our region, but I'm sure it'll happen. Other than that, just an update. The Budget Review Committee did get together a couple of weeks ago. Pretty informative meeting. Kind of got an idea of just county, regular old county statistics. And followed by an overview of the county budget,